All right, let's call the Orno Town Council meeting for Monday, February 12th to order. Roll call shows that Councillors Powers, Kenny, Laraway, Bertha, Sol Marks, myself, Councillor Wingard, our present in council chambers, Councillor Demerit will be joining us shortly. And we'll begin with an agenda review. There any items for agenda review? Okay, moving, yes, yeah. None, unless you, unless you have an agenda. Okay, all right, so seeing none, our first order is approval of minutes of January 8th, 2024. We need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion regarding approval of minutes for January 8th, 2024? Yes, one addendum, okay, all those in favor? Motion passes unanimously with the councillors present. All right, next order of business is public comment. Here's Councillor Demerit, great. People who wish to speak in our first public comment session are asked to come to the microphone, identify yourself, state your name and affiliation, and you can address the town council on items that are not currently on our agenda. If there's any public comment at this time, yes, go ahead, please come up.
Yeah, Tamra, if you could poke the button on your mic, there you go.
Testing, did it work? Okay, hello, I'm Tamra Benson, I'm a resident of Orno and I'm working with Food and Medicine and one of our current campaigns is Orno Voices for Democracy. We're advocating for people to vote to change the elections to November and we just wanted to come and thank you guys for putting that on the ballot in the first place. As Orno residents, the elections being in March has been a huge inconvenience for a lot of students and just people in the Orno area. So we mostly just wanted to say thank you for putting that on the ballot because I'm sure most people who give public testimony are here to say something negative or yell at you for not doing something and we want to acknowledge that you did something great and we're super thankful for that, so, and that's all.
Thank you very much. Is there any other public comment from anyone in council chambers? Do we have any public comment online?
No hands raised online.
Thank you very much, so without any more public comment, we'll close that section of our
I'm sorry, we do Jeff, just a second.
Oh, okay, yeah, if you could promote that person.
Hi, my name is Jackson Peck, I actually work with Tamra and I'm helping her and a lot of other Orno residents to organize this campaign and try to make sure that that ballot initiative passes, but again, just wanted to echo what Tamra said and really say thank you guys for taking the initiative to do this. We've heard from a lot of students that they're really excited about it and a lot of folks are really pleased that their, their city council is behind it, that it's not, it's not somebody coming in to change something dramatic, it's, you know, it's a bipartisan group effort that's really going to make a difference in, in the lives of a lot of Orno residents, so thank you.
Great, thank you very much. And is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, seeing no comment at this time, we'll move, we'll close public comment, we have no public hearings, is that correct, Cornell? We have no scheduled hearings at this time, okay. So we'll move to acknowledgements by council members. I think we started on, I can't remember which end we started on last time, but who would like to begin with acknowledgements?
I can go. Well, first I'd, I guess, like to acknowledge our council chair, Jeff Wingard, as he's not on the ballot. I think, is this going to be his last meeting with us? So really appreciate all the work you've done over the last several years, you've been a, a great voice for, I think, reasonable and compassionate discussion and compromise and I think care for one another and I'm grateful for your leadership and the time you've been here with us.
Um, yeah, second to all of that, you're going to be deeply missed, Jeff, it's been a real pleasure to serve with you and I've been so grateful you've been here. I wish you were staying. That being said, other acknowledgements, I wanted to say thank you to all the folks in the community who showed up and participated during the two day visit that we had with the SGR recruiter who was here. It was so many people in small stakeholder meetings, in the 30 people who came to council chambers on Tuesday night and staff who did incredible amounts of conversation and work with her also, so just huge thank yous there. And to the kids at the Last Potluck who made 100 Valentines that are mailed out today to random Orno community members, so check your mailboxes, you might get one.
Thanks both to our outgoing council chair, Jeff Wingard, and to the folks who've stepped up to run for election this time around. And to our town staff that runs really professional, wonderful elections, thank you to everyone who is part of participatory democracy today.
Echo, of course, the privilege of serving with Mr. Jeff Wingard, Jeff, you've been phenomenal in this role and just as a, as a community member, so really appreciate and will be, you will be sorely missed. The only thing I wanted to add to Sarah, in addition to, to the people that have come forward through that process, when we had the consultant here also, there's a pretty good sized list of people that have volunteered to be in the search committee as well, so I want to thank and acknowledge those folks. I think that's it, thank you.
Of course, I want to thank Jeff for his service and guidance this year as well, it's been, a lot's happened in Orno this year and Jeff has provided steady, strong leadership during this time and I appreciate it. And I also want to thank Cornell Knight, our, our interim manager for, we get a weekly, end of week report from Cornell and I know a lot of the work that comes in, goes into that is the work of staff, I appreciate getting it every Friday. And I like how, I'm not sure if they teach you this in town manager school or not, but I know that, it feels like the structure, it was like sludge, the cost of sludge was the lead this week and then we got, as we worked through it, the news got better and better to the end and I thought that was well done, not that, you know, sludge is ever bad news, but when you gotta pay a little more for it, it is, so, but thank you for those messages, they mean a lot to me.
And I just want to say thank you, Jeff, for your kindness and helping me out when I started, that was super helpful and yes, I still have your Habahart trap that I borrowed in September that you so graciously lent me and so now it's official record that it's sitting in my garage waiting to go back to your house and now everybody knows, but also I would like to just say a big thank you to Pete and Mitch for helping me out in the back room and for really scrambling when things weren't going right online, you guys made a huge difference for when the recruiter was here and I know you guys do that like on probably a weekly, daily basis and you're in the background and I just want to say thank you, I really appreciate your hard work, all right.
That was really nice and humbling, folks. I have acknowledgement along similar lines, I've, I've worked the past several years, volunteered the past several years with a, an incredible group of people. Town councillors step up for, you know, no financial gain just because we love our community and we can, what we've learned is we have sometimes differing visions of how to make our community a better place, but because we're all committed to making our community a better place, it seems to work in the end, so very appreciative of that. My time on town council has been an education for me, you know, spent about three years in town council, it's almost as long as it takes to get a college degree, so what I've learned is that there are so many functions in this town that operate really, really well and it doesn't happen magically, it happens because there's a lot of effort, a lot of care and a lot of conscience behind that, so I leave here with a really incredible appreciation for the work that people do every day. Aside from that, I also was really privileged to talk to some of the non-town staff and volunteer community members who our recruiter from SGR spent some time interviewing when she was up on, on her visit a week or two ago and it reminded me about how much people outside of this building also care about the town of Orno and our community and that was really great as well, so I really appreciate the time that people took away from their business day and their family day and whatever else they had going on to speak with Lisa and give her a more full picture of what Orno means to all of us, so that was really great, so thank you all, it's been. Let's see, our next item is unfinished business, which I do not believe we have any, so we'll move on to item eight, which is our consent agenda, we'll take a motion to accept consent. So moved?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all those in favor of accepting the consent agenda? Okay, that passes unanimously, thank you.
Maybe next time we could start the meeting at 5:05 because it seems to be the time that we'll work on next month.
All right, moving on to new business, okay, first order of new business is order 24-26, order setting the date of March 11 at 5:00 PM for a public hearing to consider an amendment to the Town of Orno Code of Ordinances, Chapter 28, Personnel, Article 6, Working Environment, Section 28-91, Potential Liability Claims of Harassment or Discrimination. We need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion on setting the date of the public hearing? Cornell?
I just wanted to point out that the only difference in the wording from when you last reviewed this at committee meeting is the first sentence there above number one, notwithstanding the provisions of 28-5A, there was discussion about it could conflict with some of the positions mentioned in 28-5A, so the attorney recommended putting in that brief statement.
Thank you.
Which I just want to clarify because I, I learned a new word, I think, when we got notwithstanding, I didn't even know what it meant, so it means like despite what it says in 28-5A, it will apply to everybody actually, right?
That's my understanding.
Okay, all right, did you all know that word? Because I didn't until the lawyer put it out.
I did know that word.
Okay, well, there you go, I didn't, so thanks.
So it means ignore all this other stuff, right? And then just read this, in this particular case?
In this case.
It means 28-5A doesn't apply to this, correct, Cornell? Right, right, okay.
Okay, so any discussion about the, the scheduling of the hearing? All right, so seeing none, we need to take an order on 24-26, setting the date of March 11th as the hearing, all those in favor? And that passes unanimously, thank you. Moving on to order 24-27, order approving ordinance amendments to the Town of Orno Ordinances, Chapter 32, Streets and Sidewalks, Street Opening Permit, Division 3. We need a motion.
So moved.
And, thank you, motion in second, Rob Yerkes.
Good evening, Rob Yerkes, Public Works Director. So this change to the road opening permit ordinance would eliminate the requirement for a $500 deposit, putting the responsibility of the repair in its entirety onto the permit holder, whether that be the property owner or the contractor performing the work, still requires a, a two-year warranty period, so at any time during that period, we can go back to the permit holder and ask them to do repairs if necessary and at the end of the two-year warranty period, we'll review it, make sure everything is still in good shape and release them from the requirements. And that's basically it.
Thank you, I think we've discussed this in committee, but if anybody has any further comments or questions? All right, seeing none at this time, we'll vote on order 24-27, all those in favor? And that also passes unanimously, thank you, Rob, don't go anywhere. Order 24-28, order authorizing the town manager to enter into an agreement with Sebago Technics of South Portland, Maine for public safety facility planning, schematic design and cost estimating at a cost not to exceed $80,800 with funds drawn from the fiscal year 24 capital facilities budget for public safety building upgrades. We'll need a motion.
So moved.
Seconded, motion second, and Rob again.
Yeah, so the town has been working with Sebago Technics to do a programming and, and physical plant evaluation of the public safety building. So back in June, council authorized us to move forward on building assessment, code assessment, programming needs for both, both agencies, both public safety, both fire and police. The assessments were completed over the course of late summer into the fall and a final report was presented to council on November 27th. In that report, there was, it basically outlined all of the physical needs of the, of the building as well as programming needs, so areas where the building didn't allow for the operation of either one of the agencies to operate at full capacity. We, at that point, had a discussion, did a tour of the facility on December 11th and staff's been working to put together a proposal to move on to the next step, so we've established what the needs are, what the, what the deficiencies are in the, in the building, we've got a nice list of what those problems are, so now it's time to start working on solutions. And so the next step of this process would be to have Sebago Technics go back, begin to evaluate possible solutions for all these problems, develop budgets for those solutions and come back to council with budgets and conceptual drawings for all of those potential solutions. We're looking at this at a couple different tiers, a level one investment, which would be a lower tier that would address sort of the bare minimum, minimum of, of what is needed to continue operating the, the agencies, a level two investment, which would be a next step up in investment level, which would bring the building up to not only meet all of the physical requirements, but also add some space and reconfigure space so that we can meet all of the programming needs for both agencies as well. We'll also take a look at level three investments, level three investments would be a little bit more involved, so two scenarios that I have in mind are, I think councillor Powers brought up the thought of what the cost would be to renovate the public safety building solely for the fire department and construct a new police department and so we'll take a look at that on a schematic level, develop budgets for that so that we can compare what the levels one and two investments turn out to be. The other one is a little more complicated, but it would involve renovations both at public safety in this municipal building as well as at least one, if not two, community buildings to sort of restructure the way staff operates and that would be also done at a schematic level, just to try to understand whether that investment is on par with a level two investment or maybe far exceeds that, we won't be able to determine that until we do a little bit more and get a little bit more information about what departments would be influenced and how much square footage would actually need to be renovated.
Thank you very much, Rob, questions from councillors?
I, you want to go, Leo, you go first?
I just, was it 5,500 square feet, was, was that the deficit?
Yes, 5,650.
What is it, 5,650? And apologize if, if it's, is that clearly kind of defined in, in their report as to where those are allocated?
Yeah, there's a table that, that shows where the deficiencies are, now we haven't begun to work on what the solution would look like, so I can't tell you exactly what the new building's going to look like or how the, you know, you know, any of that, but in the report, even in the executive summary, there's a table that outlines the existing square footage and the needed square footage based on the programming and that comes to a current square footage of 17,440 with a need based on the programming of 23,152 square feet.
Okay, I'll go, I gotta go, I'll go back and check that, just to see if that answers any further questions for me, the, the other question I had, Rob, and was it, was it Port City Architecture, was that who originally was doing this and then we transferred over to Sebago?
Yes.
Okay, all right, because i- in the scope of theirs, the original scope on the first phase with them, there was a design, the best concept for the remodel edition, new construction, include conceptual site plan, floor plans and 3D modeling, that, that was part of their first phase scope, so when we switched from them to Sebago, that, that scope went away.
But what our initial scope included that, the cost was pretty high, so we decided that we would get the first phase done, the needs assessment and the building evaluation, use that information to decide if it made sense to move on with the next steps and so that's where, that's the stage that we're at right now.
But with Port City's original phase one, that was, that was part of it, correct, so it just changed.
It would have eventually been, yes, but they were only going to do one and it was a very specific solution that they were prescribing for us.
All right, thanks.
Sure, I can go, I will first off apologize for missing our last committee meeting in which I would have had opportunity to ask more questions, so I was on an airplane, got delayed, wasn't able to make it and sadly that meeting wasn't recorded, so I feel ill-equipped to vote on this item tonight and selfishly would love to send it back to committee to be able to get into it a little bit more because I take pretty seriously the responsibility of, of voting on $80,000 worth of effort and I definitely see and understand that public safety building needs renovation and that that's a priority and also it would be my preference to take another month to think about and make sure that we've addressed questions on this scope of work and so that's, that's where I'm at currently.
Sarah?
Yes, I also have some questions that I haven't felt like I yet really have the information I need and that's not by fault of staff, that's my taking time to think things through. One of the questions that I still remain with is, we were given some general ballpark figures for level two and level three last time, cost at level two was between six to eight million and cost for level three was between 10 to 12. I totally understand if we built an entirely new police department that that would cost more, but I've been confused if we renovate spaces, how that would come in higher when all the estimates from school and other projects are lower for remodeling as opposed to new construction, so I was wondering if we have those square footage kind of estimates from Sebago Technics for remodel versus brand new construction?
Not yet, because we, we haven't, the scope for level three has been undefined as of yet, so we haven't really done a lot of work on that, I think the, the one, you know, the option where we build a new facility, renovate the existing one, probably could fall in that 10 to 12 range, but maybe we do do a little bit of analysis and actually work through the exact, what, what exactly needs to be done throughout the three or four buildings that would be affected and find that it is a more efficient solution, we just haven't done the work to answer that question yet.
So I think that's where I'm stuck, is that I want us to do that work before we delve in further on these concept designs, I, I have been asking for a while and I really feel like if we're going to be looking at making major additions to buildings, that I'd like this preliminary assessment level done on all our buildings before we do that and we've already done that for Keith Anderson and the Burt Street and all the outlying buildings and now we've done it for public safety and I would like to see us do it for the municipal building before we start making decisions on where to invest, so what I understood was that that hadn't been done on the municipal building yet, that level of preliminary assessment?
No. So I guess Because it would take, what you need to understand is, what the, what the consultant would need to understand is what, what departments could be potentially affected, do programming analysis with all of those groups, four or even five, depending on how, what the scale is here. And then do a pretty, sort of, in, in some ways, what we did at the public safety building for a code assessment, structural evaluation, that kind of stuff, based on the project that was done here to renovate it in the mid 90s. But then also, you know, if this is going to work out the way it, it would have to is some, whether it be Burt Street School or, or Keith Anderson, some town operations would have to be moved, so depending on what, what activities get moved over there, what the needs are, you know, all of that would have to be evaluated and then of course, square foot numbers could be generated and that kind of thing, so.
So I guess I'm just
It's, it's its own project.
I understand, I guess I'm just going to say to my fellow councillors that that's really rather how I would rather proceed, that I would rather have an estimate, I mean, a evaluation of this building done beyond even what we end up doing with public safety and where the police end up and the fire department, I guess I feel like I'd like to have us do that so we have that baseline for everything as we're going into these very big decisions around bonding out a lot of money to build additions, I don't feel like it's prudent to start making those decisions without that first level evaluation done on this building and obviously my hope would be that it turns out that there's a remodel solution because at least from all the RSU work that's been done, you know, their statistics are very clear that the remodel figures per square foot are significantly cheaper than the new build models per square foot and I just want to be sure we're being responsible to the citizens and the taxpayers and making sure that if there is a cheaper option, we have considered it. I don't know that it's the one we would choose and I don't even know if it will come in cheaper, as you know, Rob has explained, we don't know that, but the RSU data is very consistent and clear that everything they've done there, the remodel costs were always significantly cheaper than any new build costs, so personally, I'd like to see us take this back to committee and take a look at how to take a look at this building before we start going to the second level on the public safety building, that's where I'm at.
Rob, that, the last, when we were in, in kind of thinking this last meeting about what was going on, one of us asked you, or asked, is it more expensive to remodel or to build new and I, the, the answer at that time was that it's more expensive to remodel than to build new, but you're telling me that you don't know that now, or you do know that?
A new, if, so I don't recall
Like not
Question that way, so, but I will, a new construction is going to be more expensive than a, a remodel.
Okay, then I must have misunderstood because I, I thought it sounded like
But if they're, I guess, maybe that was in context with talking about building a new police department and still renovating the public safety building because it would still, there would be different parts of that that would have to come into play, so, but, you know, it all depends, I mean, when we start talking about relocating, you know, town clerk services or code enforcement services to a Keith Anderson building, that's more than just finding the right desk and moving it into the basement, there's a number of considerations to bring in that, you know, ADA access, code access, a lot of things come into play, you would need an elevator if you were going to use the second floor, I mean, it's not just some paint. But we could evaluate it, it's really up to you.
Is it, do you think it's, it could be possible that they could just take Is it, do you think it's, it could be possible that they could just take the kind of the floor plan of the, I mean, rather, I'm, I, I think it makes sense what, what Sarah is talking about, but I don't think we, I, I feel like I don't want the level of engineering design more so taking the floor plan, knowing where we have operations and what, you know, just kind of it's not a, it's not a structural analysis, it's, it's more a usage thing, looking, I assume we have this, this building somewhere in print to some degree. So, you know, this is a, this is a big space, there's space out there. Is there any? If, if we're going to do something like that, is it conceivable that they could just look at a kind of a spatial rearrangement kind of thing versus whatever they just did on that building?
I mean, I guess it depends on what you want. I mean, it, it, it's going to be just as useful as you want, as you make it. You get what you, get out what you put in. So if you want them to just do half of an analysis, it's going to be half of an analysis. And you're going to be able to use it for just that. And you might find, so you might find, yes, let's go down that route. And then halfway down the route, you discover something that blows the whole thing up and you've wasted your time. So, I mean, you tell me what you want.
I, I just want to say for Emilio, I definitely want the actual structural analysis too. I don't know the age of this building, but I would want us to do what we had to do so when we're making a, you know, our strategic plans, our capital building plans for the next five and 10 years. We have all the information we need about this building to know what's coming down the road at us for costs as well. So for me, I'd want to do the full analysis so that we aren't halfway through and, you know, start a process that we don't have info on. And also so we have all the information as we're making long-range plans, which I hope we will do in the coming two years.
So I think I'm looking at it that this would be a much lower, I mean, kind of fail fast sort of approach, right? That, okay, here's the space, here's what it would take. It's a, it's a high-level assessment of our spacing needs. And at the end of the, you know, we may quickly learn that it, it just doesn't fly. And then, then we don't have a an ex, you know, three more months of however long it would take or end or forty thousand more dollars to, to do that. That's, that's where my thought process would be on that. That, again, not, not to say fail fast, but that is, that's a, that's a thing, right? You, you.
Even that Leo, if we're going to engage Sebago Technics with that, it's going to take a couple of months and it's going to cost you twenty thousand bucks. Minimum.
To do a spatial assessment.
So I am going to try to summarize based on what my fellow counselors and myself have said. That it might be helpful to go back to committee and have a little bit more conversation about exactly what level of assessment we want in a scope of work as the next step in what I think we all agree is a priority to be making wise use of space while addressing real pinch points for our staff. And if there are counselors who are like, no, we should definitely vote on this tonight, then I feel like you all should speak up and we could take a vote on it tonight. But I've, all that I've heard is folks saying like, ah, could we talk about this a little bit more? Which to me should go back to committee rather than be tonight's topic.
Okay, well, we haven't heard from counselors Larry and Demerit yet, and I also have some thoughts on this. So I'd like to hear from all of council before we jump to a vote or a non-vote.
I was really excited to see that we hired five more firefighters in the report from Friday. And I was a slow mover on the idea that we needed to do work on the, I couldn't understand the, the scope and scale of what needed to be done in the public safety building based on a report. I'm really grateful that we had that tour. I'm really grateful of the work that we're doing to you bring, bring people into our department who, who serve the community and, you know, it's nice to have people come by the potluck and, and share for them. So we've got to figure out as a council what we clearly are asking staff to do. Because I feel like, and, and some of this is, we're also new and some of these, I mean, some of the memos that really started this process happened before. Some of us were on the, on the council, so it, I think, you know, at one end, there's some voices for let's do this as, as inexpensively as we can. Others, let's do this incredibly comprehensively, which is a tremendous amount of work. And the idea that I would like very much to know what everything's going to cost before we make a decision on anything. But that's kind of unknowable and unfair to create that kind of standard for staff. And I do think the committee discussion, I wish we'd gotten ahead of this in the committee discussion last week, so we wouldn't have brought Rob to the podium tonight and have this, I think we could get it, we're still learning things. I, I'm, I want to be supportive of what staff's trying to do to learn what, where we're at. I understand there may not be votes to do that tonight. So I'm, I'm eager to hear from others too, but I just, we've, we've got to figure out if, we got to give staff clear direction on what it is we want. And I'm willing to look at the study that, that Rob's brought before us. But I don't want to, I don't want to look at it by myself, everyone to be ready for it. But I, I don't want to, I definitely don't want to ask staff to come back here again until we really have a sense of what it is precisely that we want.
Rob, did you have any thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, I think in line with Dan, I, I think I wish we'd been able to maybe talk about this a little bit more in-depth at committee before bringing Rob to the podium to talk about this project. I think we sort of signaled that we were generally in favor of going in this direction. But I think the, the concerns raised, especially by Sarah, make a lot of sense. And I, I think that's, that would be really useful data to have. And if we need to collectively get to a point where we all can agree on sort of an even higher level of analysis for this building so that we have all of that, I'm not opposed to that. I think I can sort of see where we're, we're going here. And I just hope that this discussion doesn't delay the needed work for our various departments too much longer because I, I think we, we did see in our tour of that building that this work needs to happen.
I, I want, can I ask a couple, I'm sorry, can I ask a couple of questions of Rob since we brought him up here tonight? Anything that comes out of this study that we are being asked to approve tonight is going to come back for would go out to an RFP ultimately, right? I mean, is that what would happen in terms of someone to construct it?
Yeah, well, I mean, the we, if we, if we completed the project as it scoped for you tonight, we would bring back two well-defined projects, the level one investment and the level two investment with contractor verified estimates, concepts, conceptual plans, schematic mechanical system drawings. So the questions would all be answered in terms of how those, what those scopes would look like. And then the level three investments would be a little bit less instead of five thousand, maybe twenty thousand feet, you know, view of those. For comparison, you could look at, which would also have budgets associated with them, one or two level three investments that we've talked about already. Then it'd be another sort of milestone where we would sit down with council and have a conversation about, all right, what direction do you want to go? So you could look at the level one and two investments and say, maybe that's not the direction we want to go. Let's do another analysis on what the level three investment for building a new, you know, police station would look like. And we could go down that route or you could say, I love level two, let's fund it, off we go. And then we would, the next step would be detailed project design. So we'd have to decide if we wanted to stick with Sebago Technics, of course, that would be the most efficient way to do it. Develop the project, you know, plans, specifications, the whole nine yards and put that out to bid for construction. But that is twelve months from now.
All right, yeah, I mean, there's so much to know about the Route Two project, what the library, you know, just starting the budget in terms of what, you know, how we're going to. I get it and I get the, the apprehension to spend any money. I just, if, if we're not going to approve it tonight, I, I would like to I would like to think we could work with staff to get, I don't know, next month, I mean, could it be like a real plan? Do you think?
Okay, I. Keep in mind, whatever changes you want to make to the scope, I'm going to need to work with the consultant to get a new proposal. So there's a week or two in that, we've, it sounds like we obviously need to try to schedule a committee meeting where we, you know, beat the bushes here and try to get down to a, a scope that council will support. And then, so.
Rob, did I?
We would need to move, I guess what I'm saying is to have it ready for the twelfth, we got to get rolling.
I feel like maybe what we would be delivered is sort of what I was just kind of talking about, but I, I, because you said it's going to be twenty thousand foot view of how we leverage the rest of our space. And so it's more like kind of that, it's not going to be maybe structural on, on this building or maybe on others.
Wouldn't be, it would be.
But, but it is already sort of.
Industry standard pricing that.
So I guess.
Give us a ballpark figure.
My thing was, can we, can we see that first? I don't know that that's super critical in my mind to me now at this point, but I mean, I, I would want to make sure we do actually get some real concept about how we use the rest of our spaces, even though, and that's kind of the high-level piece, I think.
Another project.
I thought, I thought you're saying that we would get that from this. Am I missing, am I misunderstanding that? I, I thought you said we will get high-level, level three stuff.
We will, we will.
Which is, which is how we would use these, this space.
It's going to be if you renovate this building, that building and that building at certain levels, this is how much it might cost. Not going to talk about moving, moving, who moves where and all of that. That would be a level of detail that would go beyond what this.
Okay, then, but thanks for clarifying.
Yeah.
Okay, so I, I think counselors have waited and we can certainly talk about this some more, but I, I wanted to share two observations I made. One is that nothing in approving this project, which we have already budgeted, precludes us from doing more analysis on this building later on or should it become necessary? So I tend to favor moving forward with this, only because I think not doing so then delays a whole bunch of other dominos. The other thing is I think there's, it's a little bit of a red herring to compare renovation, the RSU facilities with renovations municipal facilities. Because renovation through the RSU took a variety of standards. So there was a, a very light touch renovation that was done to much of the RSU, many of the RSU structure. And then a more significant renovation that was done to select pieces of the RSU structure. So the average renovation cost of the RSU does look really small compared to a potential renovation cost of this building and Keith Anderson and potentially the Burt Street School. But I think we won't get away with a light touch renovation if we have to move the PD over to here and we have to move somebody else over there. So I think the renovation ballpark that we've been provided is probably more it. It seems reasonable to me since it's just not putting paint on the walls and getting some new window treatments and whatever other kinds of things. And also the infrastructure needs of a public safety facility are, are quite different from the infrastructure needs of a school. Now, I, I won't be here to take part in these deliberations. I just know that, you know, particularly since our, the tour we took, we have a better understanding of the critical needs in our public safety infrastructure in town. And I, I would hate to think that we're being penny wise and pound foolish and not, you know, addressing, addressing those. So, yes, sir.
Thanks, Jeff. I just wanted to say that all the figures from the RSU that I took were not the quick, easy renovation figures. Those were all figures for spaces that had had bathrooms added, that had had kitchens added, that had had new HVAC vents added. So those are the costs that I got was the higher end. The paint costs, that's cheap, they can do that for under a hundred on the renovation, you know, square foot cost. But the two hundred dollar cost was on the superintendent remodel, which has had all those things added. So I just wanted to be clear on that. And then I guess the thing I feel is that I agree completely that something needs to be done and I want to do it as soon as we reasonably can for the public safety building and for the staff. I also feel like at this point, we've had answers also from Rob that typically remodel costs are cheaper than new building costs. And I just don't feel like it's responsible as a council to the taxpayers not to take a look at whatever option we have that's a remodel option as well as a new build option. I just feel like those two things need both to be looked at, to be doing a responsible job managing people's money. And although I agree that we could move forward with this and then go backwards and get a level one on this building, to me, that's eighty thousand dollars we spend that we might not need to spend if we get this analysis. And it turns out there's an easy way to use this building and this analysis would be less than eighty to do a preliminary for just this building. Presumably since it was less than eighty to do a preliminary for the public safety building. So to me, the cheaper move to do first is the assessment of this building. And the second step would be the eighty thousand on the concept designs once I had that. But again, that's me. I realize we have a range of opinions. I hope that we'll take a look at it. I also wanted to ask Rob in talking with the RSU, the board chair, he indicated that at this stage, they have been able to get basic square foot estimates on cost projects always from the contractors that they've worked with. So he said he had to push, they had to push very hard to get an estimate, a price estimate now. But I'm assuming you did that because you came back to us with that six to eight million range and that ten to twelve million range. Or is that, I mean, where did those numbers come from is my question?
Based on current bidding, based on the square footage that he's seeing on projects that he's working on in other communities.
It's a big scale estimate from him without sharing with you, like here's our square foot cost for basic remodel, our square foot cost for kitchen and bathroom remodel, you don't have those figures.
We did, so we, we're not at that level of detail yet. So we don't have a scope to analyze. So we could get there, we just, somebody just has to tell you what scope is.
That was the only other question I had, and I would still advocate that we take a look at this building first and have two options, one that's a remodel and one that's not when we get to the next stage.
Okay, there are any other comments from counselors? Yes, Cornell.
Could I ask the council that you approve this order as presented and that staff comes back with a proposal for an assessment of this building with a scope of work? Because I'm not sure real clear to everybody what that would be and how much it's going to cost and where that money is going to come from. And that we move ahead with the issues that are facing that building. And they can move in conjunction, we'll come back with a, another proposal for this building and both can move ahead if it, if it can be funded.
I mean, it, it seems like the information that we would get from this is information that we were going to want anyway. And it's not that we can't have further conversation about additional study of this building in particular. I, I lean in support of, I think I will vote for this today, if only because I know that we're going to want this information anyway.
Would it be appropriate to amend what's before us now to ask staff to come back to us with a a look at this building as well? I mean, that satisfy people or would that not satisfy people?
You could make an amendment, Dan, or we could just ask for instruction to the staff, whatever people are more comfortable doing.
I have a question on funding. Is there a reason if part of analyzing this building is to figure out what might be possible for the police that it couldn't be covered under the same fund?
I, I don't know what the balance is in that fund off the top of my head.
We had. And I don't know what the. A hundred and five thousand in the, and so we've spent forty-ish of it, so this eighty gets us, there's like nine thousand dollars left after we pay for this. So you'd need to allocate new funds from somewhere.
For me, that's all, again, why I would rather not, that I would rather do the assessment of this building first and then on to the next stage because we only have eighty thousand right now. And for me, I'd like to do them in order and it feels backwards to me to be moving on to a level two and we don't have all the data on level one yet.
Sarah is making a lot of sense to me. I think I would probably vote no on this today, not because it's not a priority, but because the order of operations to me looks the way Sarah has described.
No, echo Dan, I wish we had had this deeper conversation at our, at our council meeting and I, you know, I apologize that we're at this point, Rob, and this is, this is where we're at, but I, I think I'm in that, in that same, same position.
Okay, well, do we have any new questions or comment? All right, well, we should vote and if the order passes, we can ask staff for more information. If the order does not pass, we'll. uh, staff for more information. If the order does not pass, we'll work with our town manager to set up a committee process to make this um, what council is asking for very clear as quickly as we possibly can. All right. So the order on the table in front of us is order 24 dash 28, order authorizing the town manager to enter into agreement with Sebago Techniques of South Portland for public safety facility planning. All those in favor? We have counselors Demerit, Wingard and Laraway in favor. All those opposed? Counselors Marks, Berthasil, Kenny and Powers opposed. The motion does not pass. Thank you. Okay. And we will continue to, we'll meet with the town manager to define our next step. Okay. Thank you, Rob. Okay. Order 24 dash 29, order authorizing the town manager to execute an agreement with Isabel Ochsley, Ochsley, I'm sorry, I never remember Isabel's last name. I'm terrible that way. Doing business is IOV community planning and consulting, which is much easier to remember for comprehensive plan services to carry out. The state required update of the town's comprehensive plan with a cost not to exceed $53,286 with funds being drawn from the fiscal year 24 through 26 planning department budgets. And we'll need a motion. So moved? In a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Mitch.
Uh, Mitch Stone, uh, Director of Community Economic Development. So I'm going to set this up a little bit and then Isabel is on Exley is her last name. I know it doesn't look like that, but that's how it's said.
Thank you.
Um, so um, as we talked about in committee, um, we are coming up on our, uh, our revale and um, we're looking to uh, um, uh, sign an agreement for services um, to carry that out. In your packet, you have a scope of work and a memo, um, also cost breakdown. Um, I know that there were some questions, um, and I think some of those will be answered by Isabel in her little short presentation to kind of help just understand what she's, what's being proposed. Um, and also we'll take questions after it's done. So Isabel, go ahead.
Hi. Um, thank you all for having me. I do have uh, just a couple of slides here, um, just to answer some questions. I did go back and watch um, your conversation back in um, in January where you discussed the initial contract. Um, and hopefully you're seeing a, a slide with um, with a circle graphic on it. Um, so just in general, I wanted to kind of provide um, first an overview of comprehensive plans. And this will kind of supplement the memo that I also sent that was included in the meeting packet. Um, so just broadly, a comprehensive plan is a long range look at various topics that impact a community's character, growth and fiscal position. And it ends up becoming a shared big picture vision for a community's future as well as a, a record actually memorializing the decisions made during the planning process. And what this circle graphic is showing is sort of the comprehensive plan is um, is one plan. And in the, in that plan, it may recommend other um, plans, uh, neighborhood master plans, strategic planning exercises, um, other studies that may be warranted. And the comprehensive plan as well as those efforts also uh, serve as a legal basis for any ordinance updates, uh, specifically land use ordinance updates according to state statute. Um, and it might also recommend other policies or programming decisions for the community through that 10 to 12 range, uh, 12 year long range period. Um, I know someone had a question at your January meeting about um, the length of time for comprehensive plans. Typically you adopt them uh, with a sort of lifespan of 10 years and the state gives us two more years to sort of um, go through the process of updating them and creating a new vision before they expire in 12 years. So just to get into the, the details a little bit more, um, what I'm proposing specifically for Orno uh, is first a, a phase one, which would be sort of reviewing the um, current data and responding to 12 state required topic areas. And these range from items from historic uh, and archaeological resources to land use, um, to natural resources and the environment, trails, recreation, um, and then public facilities and sort of fiscal capacity of the community. Um, and that's really where we spend a lot of time doing data analysis and responding to questions that the state uh, has outlined for us in chapter 208, which I believe I linked in your memo. Uh, and that we're anticipating a five month um, sort of data gathering period and working with the committee to refine those narrative chapters. Then we'll, once we have a clear picture of what's actually going on in Orno today and what has been going on in the past, we'll jump into talking about Orno's future. So that'll be really the bulk of community visioning sessions, um, defining values and uh, working on hearing from the committee, uh, the community more broadly. Um, and that we've anticipated a six month process. And then we'll jump into phase three. That's usually the drafting of the future land use plan, which informs future land use amendments as well as implementation strategies that are sort of associated with the broad goals that we've identified during phase two, the community visioning phase. Phase three, we're also um, anticipating about our six month process. And then we would be going into final plan adoption. Um, hopefully we've gotten to that point where we've uh, adequately reached out to the community. We um, heard from them about their vision and values. We have responded to them through policymaking and that's ready for required public hearings. Uh, and then local adoption. And then for the next 10 years, we sort of spend that time implementing the goals, policies and strategies outlined in the plan. Um, and those are typically uh, categorized into a couple of buckets. So short term, medium term, and then long term uh, strategies. Um, just to get it down into the proposal a little, little bit more, I know there was a lot of questions around um, what the public engagement piece would look like. So this uh, the whole purpose of phase two, this community visioning piece is really to bring the council's service promise to life. This is the time where we will end up hearing and evaluating ideas from the public. Um, and where we'll be having a variety of engagement events sort of designed to um, reach as many people as possible. So what we have, what I have found from working in other communities, um, and I should add, a lot of this is informed by um, of course COVID, which during that time I was working on a comprehensive plan. It upended everything and we had to switch to an entirely virtual engagement strategy. So I learned some ways that actually still adequately reach people. And I'm using those to sort of supplement in-person engagement events. So um, I would be proposing creating a project website that sort of serves as an information hub. And that includes an online survey of virtual mapping activity, uh, data downloads, information about the uh, engagement events, um, just a, a variety of sort of interactive elements that people can access at any time. And then in terms of in-person engagement events, um, phase two outlines two open houses at the outset. That's really just to introduce um, comprehensive planning to the community, give them an idea of what we'll be looking at. Um, and what I propose there is just again, to try to reach as many people as possible. I've found that doing a weeknight meeting, um, you know, an evening meeting and then a weekend morning tends to get the most um, amount of people to actually attend that meeting. And then I have also proposed four topic area specific meetings. So through the online survey and some of our open houses, we would end up, typically what happens is we end up finding some emerging themes that people really want to dive into more. That could be things like um, housing, recreation, natural resources. Uh, and we would hold meetings specific to those. That would be when we kind of get into the nitty gritty and start hearing some specific ideas from the public. Um, and taking those into the next step. Then at the end um, of phase two, kind of going through a visit to schools. Um, that's a really fun thing for me. Um, I put together a sort of mapping activity um, for elementary school students where I go and I give a little presentation about what we're working on. And then they draw on maps what they want their community to look like, which is usually really illuminating. As well as two future land use workshops and then two final plan open houses. Basically, once the plan is uh, completed, really in phase three there, we would have uh, some open houses to talk about the, the strategies that we've come up with um, to get some public feedback before we actually go through the public hearing process that's required by the state. Um, and again, I mentioned, you know, many meetings will be held twice in the evening and a weekend to broaden reach. Um, for the topic area meetings, I have included in the cost estimate um, time and funds for a direct mailed invitation to all of the addresses in town. Just to make sure that they're getting, you know, targeted uh, invitations to these meetings. And then I mentioned the website to serve as an on-demand project hub that people can access anytime. So even if for some reason they can't make it to any of the meetings, there's still an opportunity to participate. All, all but in a, in a little bit of a different way. Um, I think that's really what I wanted to share. Um, if you have any other questions, I'll be available. And then I know that Mitch is still in the audience to answer those. Um, so yeah, happy to uh, get into as much or as little detail as you'd like here.
Isabel, thank you very much. And um, I apologize again for mass hearing your name. But that was really informative and it answered a lot of questions that were brought up in our recent committee meeting. But I, I'd be interested to hear from counselors, what else we would like clarification on? Yeah, Dan, go ahead.
Isabel, Isabel, thanks so much for um, that presentation. I appreciate you uh, speaking to our service promise of your voice matters in, in terms of, I thought that initially when I first saw your, first saw your presentation, um, and I've think you've um, personified that in the work I've watched you do with the planning board. Um, so I, and I was excited that we asked the planning board for feedback and they provided some really strong feedback. We're, as a council, when you, when we have a new manager, we'll need to do goal setting or strategic planning. Can you, can you speak to what you think the um, how the comprehensive plan would support that in, you know, phase one, phase two? Do you think we need to uh, thinking if, if we need to do five to six months of kind of strategic planning, goal setting, may hopefully less with our new manager? How does it um, is, is this work in phase one, sort of a quiet phase? Where, you know, we're putting the ducks in a row that we could start now and then become, you know, phase two be the area where we get more engagement and more suitable to kind of the strategic planning or goal setting that a council would do with a new, a new municipal leader?
Um, so I can kind of jump into the proposal itself and I might let Mitch or Cornell take um, sort of Orno specific information about your upcoming strategic planning. So um, to, to answer your question, phase one is really more of a, I won't go as far as to say a silent phase. It is still open, public meetings that people can attend. But it's not um, the more interactive public engagement that I would be hoping for in phase two. Um, so I think you probably saw through the planning board's comments. Um, Phil Ruck, the planning board chair, offered a number of comments around what worked for them last time. And he suggested having a little bit longer of a phase one to have time to go through existing conditions. Let the committee ask feedback of town staff and local stakeholders and, and other experts um, as they're developing the narratives. So um, the meetings would be open to the public and we would sort of be planning on doing um, uh, facilitated discussion with experts and bringing them in as well. Um, in terms of your strategic planning, what I have found works well in communities is uh, once the comprehensive plan is adopted, uh, the, the typically the town planner sort of helps facilitate uh, inclusion of some of the shorter term goals in any council strategic planning that ends up happening. Um, so you know, uh, also being involved in that work, uh, providing any comments that were outlined in the comprehensive plan and, and overall just being um, involved in that work. To make sure that they are continually underscoring the vision and the um, items that were identified as part of the comprehensive plan process.
And, and just to follow on that, say a community, you know, a hypothetical community needs a new public safety building or maybe a new fire department or something like that. How would, is it comprehensive? I mean, clearly we have work to do um, in that regard. Is the comprehensive planning that you envision supportive of that too? Cause I mean, cause there is, there's, there's an interest, strong interest on this council, I think, in having kind of the big picture path forward to how we're going to manage capital planning in this town, how we're going to pay for it. And you know, where things are going to go. Is, is comprehensive planning going to help us with that?
Yeah, I think um, so one thing that I specifically like to do sort of outside of what the state requires is um, the comprehensive plan will include a capital improvement plan for improvements that are specifically noted in the plan. So it won't include every potential item that could come up in conversation. And it's still open to obviously council direction at the time of the budget process. But you'll have some items in the capital improvement plan in the comprehensive plan. And what I like to do is um, actually make those sort of like smart strategies. So I don't like to just say, the town said that they wanted to fund these major transportation improvements, but I don't have a way to pay for them outlined here. What I like to do is actually suggest in that um, in the comprehensive plan, sort of potential grants that you could go after, ways to fund it, uh, plans for putting money aside, things like that. So without pigeonholing the council through your budget deliberations, at least having a little bit of a strategic path forward for those items specifically noted in the comprehensive plan is sort of how I like to approach this, if that makes sense.
Yes, it does. Thanks so much. And just so make sure I heard it correctly. You think that the plan you had, the do, can you speak again to how your plan maps would let Phil recommended in his comments? Do you think it lines up pretty closely or did you make any changes in response to what he had to share with you?
Yeah, so um, Phil sent over those comments and then I met with him and Mitch to follow up on them. I thought he had a great idea. Um, and the um, the cost breakdown and the scope that's in your packet tonight has been revised to reflect the updated cost with his comments.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Isabel, could you clarify, um, with Phil's comments, he was suggesting extending phase one, is that correct?
Yeah. So in the initial um, proposal that you guys looked at back in your uh, January meeting, um, I think I had only had it at three months. Um, that would be really me doing the bulk of the work and then presenting the chapters to the committee at the end. Phil's suggestion was that we again, have those conversations with local experts, hear from people in a public setting so that the committee feels as wedded to the narrative chapters as I do, having written them. Um, so we've extended that to the six month timeline or the five months timeline that I referenced um, in this updated one.
And I think this is also just a follow-up to Dan's question. Could you clarify? Um, I'm curious what's not in the comprehensive plan that is in a strategic plan? Like as we're looking at doing both of these, I hear that there's a lot of overlap and that one informs the other and it goes back and forth. But my understanding, and I could be totally off, is that a strategic plan is actually larger than a comprehensive plan? That it would have all the things in a comprehensive plan and hopefully be informed by a comprehensive plan, but also have some other things? Can you speak a little bit to that of what's not in a comprehensive plan that might be in a strategic plan?
So I would say, and, and I'll just note, I've worked on four or five comprehensive plans throughout my career now. And uh, in any, none of those towns did they have a specific long-range strategic plan? They were utilizing the comprehensive plan in the place of a long-range strategic plan. But from my understanding at least, a strategic plan might include more information about um, sort of uh, staffing and more uh, information around uh, actual um, work within sort of the, the government of the town itself. Whereas this is, the comprehensive plan is very heavily focused on infrastructure and land use more specifically. Um, I think it does do a good job of taking a long range look at a variety of issues. But I think a lot of the recommendations you end up seeing are mostly focused on land use and infrastructure issues.
Thank you. I have one more question, Jeff, and then I will cede. Um, my other question would be, and this is not, I love this plan. I just want to say upfront, I love this plan. I like everything about it. I like the extension that Phil added. I've heard nothing but great things about all the work you do. And I hope that we move forward with a contract with you. But I did want to know, is your start date flexible? Like if we were to say, given where we think we're going to be in our strategic planning process, it might make sense for these community conversations not to start until November instead of September. Are you flexible for starting in June on this for phase one instead of April? Or it is your schedule preclude your flexibility on that?
No, my schedule does not preclude me, I, 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 anyway, I can be flexible here. So I'm, and I'm happy to do so if needed. Yeah.
Helpful. Thanks.
Other questions from counselors?
Um, just I, uh, Isabel, I appreciate you taking a crack at uh, educating us.
Just I, Isabel, I appreciate you taking a crack at uh educating us on comprehensive uh verse um. Strategic planning and because I it's probably, it sounds. That it's maybe not your, obviously you're our comprehensive planning person. So I do appreciate because I think, but that's an important kind of, I think. Point that we don't maybe understand what that is. And I and I wonder if like if Lisa might have looked, if she did look at our um comprehensive or not. Um, my my.
She did.
Oh, okay. Yeah, just I wonder if she looked at that and um. It's feeling to me like these can be kind of a parallel. I don't know. I I I'm. To somebody, I think it was Sonia's email or something today, talking about um. Making sure that we don't, that we're doing it all at once or at the right timing and all of that stuff. They they feel a little bit. They they sort of feel a bit independent to me. Like this is, this is something that is pretty prescribed on what has to happen, I feel like in. Comprehensive plan, maybe I think we have to do a little more understanding of, you know, A, do we want to go that route or or how much different is it going to be than the comprehensive? I understand the caution, I guess, to to make sure we're we're looking at everything at the right time. My, I guess I'm I'm feeling, I did want to also comment, I I appreciate Phil Ruck's uh feedback and and the fact that that you've gone back and and altered. Altered this to a, I think what everyone here would appreciate, hit it. Taking that approach and extending that and involving people. So um just to back up and say, I do, I really appreciate all of that. I I'm feeling like this could be. Like this is prescribed. It's something we has been done. We've got people that have done it and sort of understand it. Um, I I think these can be done in parallel in in my in my view. I could could be wrong, but that's sort of where my mindset is. So I just want to put that out there.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments?
Sure. Um, just want to thank Isabel uh for your detailed scope of work here. I I'm really excited. Um, hopefully we'll we'll vote in favor of uh or or vote to approve this. Um. I also am really grateful for your flexibility in response to Sarah's question and you taking into account Phil Ruck's comments. And also um you taking into account this council's, I think, really um. Strong desire to have lots of community engagement in this process to make this a really important sort of community-wide uh visioning. Process that sets us in a good place where everybody can feel good about where we're going for the next 10 years. Um, so. I'm in favor of approving this and I'm really looking forward to working more with you, Isabel.
Yes, Sonia.
Sure. Um, as Leo referenced earlier, I I did send an email to my fellow councilors earlier thinking about how to. How does the comprehensive plan interface with a potential strategic plan and what is the ideal order of operations to make sure that one is informing the other? And so it was really helpful to hear you speak to Sarah's question that was. Um, related to that. I feel good about approving this scope of work, um especially since. As has already been named and described, there can be some flexibility in in the timeline of um sort of making sure that we're doing this in a way that's really uh strategic and um. I guess my my follow-up question as I'm thinking about how to best involve community members and leverage volunteers in a potentially parallel comprehensive planning process. And strategic planning process is um, I want to be mindful of town councilors attending double meetings and also potential members of the community and volunteers. Being asked to attend sort of double meetings. And so I'm curious if you can speak a little bit to more to um. In the event that council launched a um strategic planning process at the same time that we were also. Doing um phase two of this comprehensive planning process, can you imagine um synergies or uh sort of conflicts? Or can you speak to? How that might best work with community volunteers um as you're imagining our future together?
I think in general, um, you know, I think maybe you've seen from the proposal, I'm coming from communities that um, you know, are are larger and maybe have a lot more going on uh in like. In terms of literally the nightly meetings of, you know, like uh having meetings nightly. So I think it's just going to be um. A continued conversation and making sure that we're adequately communicating with the public, sort of the differences between what's going on. Um, and making sure that they are aware, if you attend this meeting, um. While we were, we'll certainly on, you know, consider your comments and uh as part of this process, you may also be interested in this. So. Both adequately communicating as we're advertising our meetings, um what will be accomplished uh and sort of what the goal is, but then also. Continually promoting um a conversation or a um. Yeah, just sort of an ongoing feedback. Feedback for both uh projects. Um, yeah, I think that's where what I would say there. It's just going to be a little bit about communication.
Yeah. Yeah, that that makes sense to me that that these things feel like they're synergistic and most things can be solved with good communication. Um, Sarah, you had a follow-up?
Yeah, I was actually just wondering, as opposed to helping people be clear, like this meeting is comp plan and this one is strategic plan. Can you envision a way in which we could combine those community meetings so that people could come and you would have your set of questions about the comp plan and there would be additional questions that would inform a strategic plan so that people don't have to come to double meetings? It sounds to me like there would be so much overlap between the kinds of questions folks would be answering at both of those. Is that something you have ever done or would consider doing?
Yeah, I'm happy to consider that. I think um this will need to be sort of an ongoing conversation between us about. Uh, understanding what your goal of your strategic planning process is. Um, as I mentioned, you know. It's not a specific requirement of the state, so many municipalities in Maine don't do it um for better or for worse. So I think we would just need to kind of have that conversation about what you're hoping to get out of your strategic planning process so that I can make sure that I am. Um, being helpful in sort of finding those areas where there is overlap.
Thanks. That's really helpful. What I would really love to avoid doing is making people go or not making, inviting people to go through this entire process and then say, oh, you did that for a year. Now come back and do it again for a year while we talk about our strategic plan. I think we would have community burnout at that point. And that's what I don't want. I want it to be something that's engaging where people want to participate. So your flexibility is very much appreciated. Um, I'm just going to say to my fellow councilors. I feel like I'd be happier with a one-month delay on the schedule at least so that our new manager could get in and we could have some strategic plan conversations before the. Community things are launched. Launching in September feels tight to me, but that's just me. Thanks.
Okay, thanks. I think um the order in front of us doesn't preclude changing the schedule at all, so we can talk with staff about that. So Isabel's been very helpful answering a lot of questions. We've sort of left Mitch hanging. I I'd like to ask Mitch if there's anything that we should know about from the municipal side that we haven't asked you.
So I would just add the fact that also we need to create a committee and and we have a, we have a planned moving forward to be able to do that, not necessarily. Looking at the 26th meeting to bring Phil and Isabel to that to explain the makeup and some ideas and have a conversation about that so that we could move forward with that. I also would say that um obviously, like anything, understanding what you want out of a strategic plan is important because that overlap, that's where the problems are alive. If if nobody knows. If we're unsure of what that is. I think the other thing is, is this is a year and a half to two-year process. So you're not going to get anything about budget or um information on infrastructure this year. It's going to be, you know, it's going to be closer to next year's budget. You'd be looking at those things. So I just. I just want to make sure that we're not going to jump into this and have answers tomorrow. It's a, it's a process for a reason. Um, and I and I also think that I'm excited about the conversation we had with Phil and um and looking at. I think it's important for our community and everyone here to understand where we are. And I think that being a little bit more of a open public, other than Isabel just doing it. Um, allows people to really understand where we are, because I think sometimes we forget, and I'm sure you hear from folks in the community and we hear all the time is, I wish we were doing that. Oh, we do do that. Oh, I didn't know we did that. So. Just really setting that baseline for everybody. And I think this will be a good process, especially having a new manager come in to kind of see where the community sits. So.
Okay, thank you.
Jeff, I had a question for Mitch.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, that was super helpful. Thank you. Um, I was just wondering on the um, I guess, again, it's a little bit of a. Process thing for me to understand. For the committee, will we have an open process where people can self-nominate to say they're interested in serving on the comprehensive plan committee the way we've done for the. You know, advisory research committee for the town manager. So it's not just us approaching people to say we think you'd be great, but there's also an open call to who's interested in this and would like to serve?
So um you guys decide that. Um, I think the one thing that you'll hear what's important is is filling roles. There are, there are things that you're going to want to have a makeup that's there. So. Um, however that shakes out, um, that's up to you folks, but um certainly I think um, you know, all those things are, you can, you can do it lots of different ways. So.
And so and we were, we, I just heard that Phil uh will and and Isabel will be here. And we'll probably, we could, we're going to learn in that meeting maybe as well, right? That's.
Yes.
That'd be a good.
Yes.
Opportunity. Thanks.
The 26 is what we're trying shooting for that committee meeting.
All right. Thank you very much.
Chef Wayne Garbo will still be here.
All right. Um, seeing no further questions or comments. Um, let's take a vote on order 24 dash 29. All those in favor? And this order passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Isabel, for joining us on this.
Thank you.
Uh, that closes new business. Uh, item number 10 is future agenda items, items of concern. I think we heard that uh we'll make a request of our town manager to help us schedule some public safety planning meetings in uh. An upcoming committee session as soon as we can reasonably do that.
Can we talk about? I mean, the totality of what we're asking for and before we start, I I feel like we need to get a strong consensus. And I definitely support, I understand why the vote went the way it did tonight and I'm was. I would have um preferred that we'd gotten ahead of it and maybe. Taken it off the agenda before we got it on the agenda if it wasn't going to go this way. And I get it, you know, we're all busy, we're all so. I do um, but I I think it's going to be helpful and useful to for staff to. Really have a clear sense of what it is that we want. Because I feel like we've been pull, it's like pushing a rope on this. I think they've been, I think, I don't know who's the rope and who's pushing it and who's pulling it, but. I feel like we haven't had a given staff a clear mandate on what it is we want on capital planning. And I think that's critically important that we do that for everyone's, everyone's peace of mind and and saving, you know, making sure our resources go on where it where they ought to go. And I don't know how. We do that in a, you know, committee meeting without. They got budget priorities, you know, we really need to um, if we're going to be, we need to be a, if. We're going to be a leadership council, which I think we have. I think we've got a lot of leadership on this council and a lot of strong um beliefs in what, how, in what we want to achieve, what we want ORNO to be. But we we need to spend the time together to really talk about what that is and so so people have a clear direction from us. And I'm I'm eager to be a part of it. Um, I I just want to do it, you know, proactively.
Could could I maybe ask that councilors share with? I I don't want to take time away from you. If you have a great idea right now, we'd love to hear it, but I know that sometimes it's important to step back and think about what our priorities actually are. That within the next day or two, within a very short amount of time, so we don't drag this process on, we share with our. Town manager what we would like to hear in a committee meeting, what kind of information we feel we need or what our committee, what our planning priorities would be. Uh, then Cornell can kind of put that list together. If there are things that come up from multiples, people suggesting, those will rise to the top. And if there are outliers, maybe then we can talk about those outliers and say, hey, here's another great idea that we didn't hear from from someone else, but it's a great perspective. So. Just in the interest of not giving people one shot at it and then never coming back to it again.
I think that's a great suggestion.
I think that's great, Jeff. Can I ask another question?
Sure.
I don't know if we've ever done this as a council, but I guess I just want to ask, like, we do have our committee meetings, which are actually the whole council at the committee meetings, but I know. In other boards, there's a different structure where there are subcommittees that, you know, two people on the council sit down with. The, in this case, the town manager and two staff to sort of hammer out, we think this is what we've heard from council that they want and work together on that so that. That isn't, that's behind the scenes and not a publicly broadcast meeting and can be multiple meetings before you get to the actual public meeting. To not send staff down a path that people aren't trying to go down. I feel like part of the problem has been not enough communication between council and staff. Because we have been voicing since I've been on council, a pretty clear statement that we wanted a plan that was only remodel, right? But somehow there was a miscommunication and it didn't happen. And I don't know how that happened, but I feel like part of it may be that there hasn't been much conversation with. Like one or two counselors and some staff in a room together. I'm just curious, is that something we've ever done? Would we consider doing it? How do people feel about it?
I think the lessons, the lessons from the the sign issue is not. It feels like there's maybe some parallels there where we're not, you know, we're not communicating and building the trust and the and and um, because I don't. I think that's a really good suggestion. If we have, because we have some council, council participation and staff participation in a small meeting, you know, within the confines of what council can do. Um, in terms of a meeting and being together, I think that could be be helpful.
So I I thought you were going the complete opposite direction with what you were saying, that you. Where where we continue to talk about full disclosure and public meeting. And so I think. I thought you were going to say, well, if if we're off meeting and and probably that's, that's, a lot of times I think it's been the chair, maybe. Um, and that is normal course of business, but it feels counter to everything we've said for the last year about we want to be open. We want to make sure everyone. Here's the conversation, I guess. So I I I think I I hear what you're saying and I think it makes sense. But it also seems counter to what we've been sort of preaching for a year.
Yeah, Leo, that's a good point. My point was not that. My point is just a smaller group that could do some work and bring something back. So as far as I'm concerned, those meetings could be public and held here and noticed if we wanted. I don't really care. I just feel like a smaller group that could take whatever comes in from council and sit down with staff and work together so that there isn't a, there just feels like there's a disjoint somehow. Between where staff's going and where council's going, and we keep not figuring out how to bridge that, even though we sit in meetings and we talk in these big group meetings. And I, I mean. It's a subcommittee and it could be open too. I don't have a problem with that. I could be anyway on that. I just wonder if more of that conversation would help to get us where we need to get.
What I wonder is if, is if we do it in subcommittee and we don't, we don't. Get have, we don't have to have staff here. And because it is about us figuring out what we want, I think at this point, um, maybe, maybe not. That that that's my thinking is that. If we provide clear direction, I think that's, that's maybe what hasn't been done to date maybe. So. But to your point, it has been, stuff has been said along the way, so so maybe that's not the the cure-all. I I don't know. So I'm just talking at this point. Sorry.
Feels like some of it might be like a project. I think the search has been, I think the search really reflects. What council wanted to do with the search. And I think, you know, it's, it's been a lot of time. And a lot of work and, you know, leadership from a couple of councilors in particular. Um, but I do think that model has. We've got, I think we're getting the search that we really, that really reflects what we wanted to achieve because we've been really involved in. Very proactive way. And I mean, it's a different, that may be a different approach to what's been done in the past, but. I, in a lot of ways, I think it kind of reflects what we want to do is in terms of um. So anyway.
Okay, so, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I was just kind of back to Jeff's point, I think. I feel like if we. If we all, if we could send our stuff to um Cornell, that that might be the the good route to take. And and maybe that, maybe it gets to that point, Sarah, uh where we have to do something like that. And and like I said, I don't think it's a bad idea. But it just seems counter to what we've been saying for a long time, that's all. And 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 when those, when those meetings happen in small groups. Two years later, someone's saying, hey, what happened? And we really aren't sure what happened. There's no public record and.
Leo, I would say the only way I think subcommittees work is if council gives them a really clear chart. Like you go off in a subcommittee and you come back to us with this report or this list of suggestions that we are going to then review as a council and make a decision on. Because there can't be any decisions being made in those rooms. It can just be like charged like, I don't know, like we've charged Dan to go write. The thing that needs to go out on the observer or the announcement, right? Or we've charged Jeff to go. I mean, they have to be very clear charges that uh it can only be two counselors, I guess, if it's not a full meeting, but. A very clear charge, like please accomplish this, bring it back to us for a council discussion is all I would imagine that ever being. Thank you.
Oh, I was just going to chime in that I think what what that sort of model of delegating to a focused subcommittee buys us is um then. then there's less like seven counselors all at the same time trying to wrap our heads around square footage things. Like we can be operating at a slightly higher level and less all totally in the weeds while still hopefully providing more clarity about what is that big picture that is hoped for.
So I, I don't think we have to change our working model at this time, but I think those are great suggestions. And particularly as we dive into specific projects that counselors have an affinity for and a real interest in. I think we can hopefully sort of organically come up with a system to facilitate that kind of work and that kind of communication. But we will, in the short term, share our, our comments about our interest in public safety and the kinds of information we would want regarding public safety and facilities planning with Cornell. So that he can begin planning committee, cue staff up to do great committee presentations for us in the near future. Any other future items of concern, future agenda item?
I have a item, item of concern. We've heard from a couple members of the public regarding the ballot question. And I too have registered my feedback on the ballot question that, that this, that we approved, this council approved. I don't, is there any method of providing clarification on what we're voting on? I, I really feel like this is a confusing question to me and I've, I've been here through the whole thing. So I'm wondering if we've learned anything, if there's, obviously though we can't change the ballot question, but is there, is there any way to supplement and provide maybe some more clarification?
From the information that I was able to gather, the short answer is no, without perhaps introducing more bias into the process. Like, you know, so we certainly can't change the ballot. The council takes no position on the issue. So if we were to offer a supplemental document or discussion at this point, it could be perceived, even in good faith, the perception could be that council is attempting to influence the vote in one way or the other. I take a lot of responsibility for the confusion because in, it is my own error that I did not read the full text of the summary part of that referendum into the record. I think had I done that, it might've become more clear to everybody on council that the wording is at a minimum kind of clunky and at probably better, very confusing. That is, I'm just not sure that there's a remedy at this point.
Yeah. And I, I mean, I guess, I think we're all guilty. I, I did truly just didn't know that we were approving an actual ballot question. I thought that was done after we approved. So I, process wise, did not know that, so.
Is that a process we could get some clarity on now? Because I don't, I, I felt the same way. I never knew we were actually voting to approve the language at any point. Did we actually vote? Cause at one point we had a memo saying that we don't vote to approve the language, that that's simply a staff issue. And I don't know.
We don't generate the language, right? The language is generated by our staff and in consultation with our attorney and things like that. On December 11th, the order that we took approving the ballot measure was, was the approval of the language. And that's what I'm saying. My error was that I should have read the, the entirety of that document into the public record. Because then I think it would have been really clear to all of us. Boy, that's really long and kind of confusing. And I wish I had, in hindsight, I wish I had done that. So to the extent that, that there is confusion out there, I, I want to sort of own my error there.
Jeff, I think that's on all of us. I don't think that's just yours. And I, for me, I'm learning about how the process works and it's helpful to know. And maybe we can figure as a council, how to make that clearer to each other. And when we have those kinds of orders that we're not just approving the order that we need to take a look at the language. Or maybe we can take a look at that in committee ahead of time. I don't know. But thank you. I don't think it's you, on you any more than all of us. Thanks.
All right. Any other items of concern, future agenda items? Okay. Seeing none. Let's move on to town manager's report. Cornell, do you have anything you want to share with us or I can talk about?
I would just mention that the ad for the managers on the town's website with the link to the SGR brochure.
Super. We had, at a prior meeting, tabled the Friends of Orno Schools mini grant request application. And we'd identified some questions we had about that mini grant and.
Jeff, can I say one thing about the town manager's?
Oh, please go ahead.
Just to follow up, because I had a question from one counselor that SGR has encouraged us to also share that out. The link that's on the town website to share that out. Someone on council asked, can I show that out with my own contacts? And they encouraged us to share that, the link to the brochure and whatever else is posted on the town website. So please do.
Great. Thank you very much, Sarah. So we had, we had received a mini grant proposal from Friends of Orno Schools regarding their first project, which is providing some lighting and some other facilities improvements up at the school. We had some questions about how that might fit into the context of our mini grant sort of setup. So I was able to have a really good conversation with a member of Friends of Orno Schools. And then Counselor Dometor and I were able to attend another meeting, kickoff meeting of the Friends of Orno Schools. And the document that was shared with us is in our background information. But if we have questions before we revisit that, maybe I can clarify some of those questions from what the information I was provided. So.
I was wondering on the total budget, it looks like maybe there's a typo there. Is it supposed to be 142,000? It looks 142 with two zeros after it right now. So it was a little confusing.
So the, the budget for their project in that, that was one of the things we asked for clarification on is 142,000. That's, that's the entire project budget. They have already secured about $30,000 in funding. They will secure another big chunk of funding from the RSU. The rest of the funding will be raised through smaller grants and private donations. So they included in their mini grant, the, in their grant application, the entire project. And said, we would like funding at whatever level the council is prepared to offer towards the completion of this project. And I advised them, the grants were intended to be a thousand dollars or less. The grants were intended to have a direct impact on the community and the grants were intended to be used in a timely manner. And to, in that conversation, he said, well, you know, he, they explained the timeline of the project so that it, you know, groundbreaking will be this summer. Dan, correct me if I'm wrong, Matt? Oh, Matt was also there. Matt, I'm sorry. Matt was also at the meeting, but we didn't talk about town council business. So the, in terms of timeliness, it would be a matter of months before the funds would be expended. So it wouldn't go on for a year. And in terms of impact to the community, the idea is that by providing lighting at the cross country ski trails behind the high school and also the soccer fields, it's kind of the same facility that would open up access to those uses for members of the, for the greater Orno community for a longer amount of time.
Can I just speak to the community part of it real quick? Because I'm, I'm, to put my, again, I like to put my cards on the table again. I'm involved in this particular community activity, and that is the ski farm, which is kids. We get 60 or more kids every Sunday and Wednesday. And the Wednesday starts at 6:30. So it's pitch black and we ski behind the, the school. And it's not just us, all the families come and most of them ski, ski out on those too. And so this would provide a safer community ski time during the week. So there is a community involvement beyond just the community, getting the community together for soccer games and, and other events that can happen on that field.
Yeah. And I, I do, I love this whole concept. I love that these, this group has pulled together. I didn't catch the kickoff meeting, but super supportive of their efforts and thrilled to see lights going up back there. Well, actually I guess that'll be, there's going to be somebody that doesn't like it probably. But so I just realize, I realize that aloud, but it, it is, you know, the soccer games, we, we've, we've had ending soccer games where we literally, if we could have pulled the cars on the, on the field to keep the lights, so they could see what they were, it was a shoot off. So it was kind of fun, but I think it's, it's an exciting, exciting adventure they're, they're taking on.
I had a question, Jeff. You said that they thought they were going to break ground on this project this summer, but they only have half the funds. So how are they starting if they've only raised half the funds?
Well, Dan and Matt were also at the meeting. They can maybe speak to this. The fundraising is, is pretty aggressive. Their fundraising schedule is pretty, it's, it's very planful. With a $50,000 contribution from the RSU, $30,000 in grants, in contributions already raised and a number of grants out there. They feel comfortable that they'll be able to pull this off within their schedule. But I'm, I'm not privy to their planning. I'm not on their board or anything like that.
I think my only other question is to council, this sounds like a cool project. I love the idea of having lighting up there. I just want to throw it back to council. This would be the first one that we would have considered where we're sort of a drop in the bucket of something huge as opposed to like, you know, starter money to make something happen that wouldn't otherwise happen. And I don't, I'm not saying I have an opinion, but I do feel like we should bring it up and say this would be different, right? Than other things where we funded a hundred percent of cost or 75% of cost. And this is, you know, 1,000 out of 142. I just want us to talk about it. Like, is it something we envision these mini grants being for to be a little tiny drop?
I, I kind of agree in terms of, you know, many, I, I'm supportive of this and I'm inclined to vote for it. But I, I do think it's, it's kind of a, it is interesting that it is, I thought we'd be the last, these would be like the last few hundred dollars. It got somebody to do something that otherwise wasn't going to happen. And I like the idea of a more, I, I like the idea of it, this is going to be an ongoing group, the Friends of the Orno School. They're still going to be friends of the Orno Schools once the lights are up. And I think it's going to be, I, I like the idea of contributing to the ongoing work they're going to do to get organized and stuff like that. And I don't know if there is, be a way to capitalize that as opposed to, but infrastructure. But, you know, we don't, you know, by design, we didn't spend a lot of time hammering out all the things we wouldn't do because we wanted to be responsive and quick and so.
I think my, my counter to that, Sarah, would be, I think we did fund an existing program with the farmer's market thing, which that wasn't, that wasn't a new, that one to me didn't, didn't fit also because of that. And, and this is, yeah, it's not to complete that, but I, I'm, I'm fully in support of this and believe it's it's something we would want to fund personally, but.
That makes great sense, Leo. I wasn't, I don't have an opinion. It's just, I think we should have these conversations each time one comes up, because we're kind of building for ourselves.
Fair.
A sense of what we're hoping these grants can do. And that's all I was asking about.
Mitch? I, I just wanted to mention this project will have to go through the planning board process. So just so you're aware of that before you make any of those decisions. No, I just wanted to, there is a process that they have to go through for approval for, before they can do it.
So Cornell, I'm looking at your end of it. Does this prejudice, if we make a decision before the planning board, does it prejudice the planning board in any way? In your opinion?
Oh, I don't think so, because you're going to have many friends of the schools and. So, no, I don't.
And I guess my other question to council is if we foresee that we start getting a lot of these requests, like from, you know, the arts booster or the this or the that, to give a thousand here and a thousand there. Is there something beyond like, that we're looking at on this one that would make it different than those kinds of requests? Is it because we see community members using this space that are not connected to the school? You know, Matt's talking about there's, you know, families and other folks out there, not just the school using it. I don't know. I just, I'm wondering, there are a lot of these booster clubs and we could all of a sudden get a lot of these requests for a thousand dollars toward the snack shack and a thousand dollars toward that. I mean, I could envision a lot of them might come.
Yes. My take is they, they stop coming when the $10,000 is gone.
Sounds good. Thanks.
It's kind of a, we, we've definitely been, I think, a little fast and loose with, with it to begin with. So we're going to, you know, I don't, I don't know if the plan is that we'll do this next year or not either. So that's my take is it's, there's a, there's a defined benefit there. And when it's gone, it's gone. We've been pretty clear about that upfront, so.
Now, I would say I'm generally supportive of this. I do think what Sarah's raising is worth giving some more thought when we think about like the, the purpose of starting this up is, I think a lot of it was, is meant to be seed money for projects that otherwise wouldn't be able to happen. And that's not quite what this is. I still, I think I want us to be able to signal our support here. And I think it's a, a fine use of these funds here. But it, I think going forward, maybe it's worth us thinking about whether or not we want to discuss more about booster clubs and, and these other things that maybe don't need our thousand dollars to happen. But that we still want to signal support for, are there other ways that we might be able to support groups like that? When they do bring requests like this, I mean, when, when I think about the, I forget how much we, we contributed. Was it $18,000 to the Caribou Bog? There might be other ways that we might be able to budget around signaling support that don't eat into, I think, more. I mean, this is community based, so I, I'm not, I'm unclear about exactly my thoughts on it, but I'm grateful to Sarah for raising it. But I, I think I'm supportive of this currently.
I had the same question, like whether we would give the thousand dollars like we did to Caribou Bog and not as a mini grant. I just didn't know. I just wanted to throw that out. It might be something we want to look at. Maybe that's a different one time thing. I don't know. But I'm fine with it as a mini grant if that's where the consensus is. But I do think we need to like, keep looking at the things as we go forward.
Yeah, I think I'm fine moving ahead with this one as a mini grant in part because it's, you know, it's a project that's building momentum and has an element of newness to it. So it does feel like we're seed money that's part of something that's sort of blooming and growing here.
I also feel strongly that like, if we decide to change it next year and we decide to do it again, and we say, you know, we just want it for small people, then next year, that's what we do. So this isn't like the end of the discussion.
We don't take a formal vote on these, but it does seem like consensus is to support this at the thousand dollar level. So I'll ask Cornell to reach out to the applicant and let them know that we've approved the thousand dollars and we can work out a method. I, I think right now it's just a commitment and then we'll work out a method for transferring the funds when it's appropriate. Like I don't, I don't think there's an, unlike the other mini grants where an individual gave us a W9 or something like that. I don't think that's going to be the mechanism for this. Correct?
No, I thought they were forming a.
They, they are a 501. C3, okay. So, yeah, but you can.
It can be the same.
Okay.
Fill it out, send me a bill and we'll pay it.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you. So we'll leave that to Cornell, Daniel. All right. Are there any public petitions at this time? All right. Is there any public comment? Pete, do we have any public comment online?
No comments online at this time.
Thank you. We have no executive sessions planned for this evening. So if there's no further business, I'll take. Oh, yes.
One very quick thing, sort of forgot to mention in the acknowledgements, that the Orno Historical Society is meeting tomorrow at 6:30. Really grateful for the work of several new volunteers who all want to help continue the work of the Orno Historical Society. So if anybody wants to join, we have had it on the sign as well. But that will be at the Burt Street School, 6:30 tomorrow on Tuesday.
Thank you.
I had one other thing, Jeff. You want to get that, Matt? I just want to say on the record that we do have a little bit of food and a little bit of celebration here for Jeff. And I don't know that that's going to continue to be broadcast, but it is open to folks who are staying to celebrate our outgoing chair and want that on the record, that the counselors will be staying a little bit to eat and not conduct any business and say thank you to Jeff.
I had no idea, but I'm always up to eat. Thank you very much. All right. We'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
In a second. All those in favor? And that is unanimous. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.